Call this work session to order at seven forty-one September twenty-fifth. The first item on there, listing in order I guess as we're going now is building blocks.
Yeah. So one of the things, and I mentioned it up front there, that we would like from you, and I'm gonna use Lori as an example, so she's got a request in right now, Adam actually did while we were sitting in the meeting here and sent to me.
Hi, Adam.
But his, her, her question was, okay, so what would, what would Wood look like if we removed the Northwood area, right, that I had showed you as a building block last time? So think about it as, she's asking the question in reverse now, which was not, what's the Northwood building block look like, which was the question she asked last time. Now she's asking, what would Wood look like if that block was not a part of it? So when we've been talking as a group, one thing that would help us would be to, to think about the building blocks, and you don't need to do this tonight, we just need you to think about it, and whether you come back at the next work session or you email us in between. But if you were to say, okay, we looked at Lakewood, okay, okay, what if Lakewood wasn't part of Alexander? Let's run the numbers on Alexander, so we know what Alexander looks like without that. So rather than looking at the blocks, I think what we ought to start doing now is looking at the attendance areas plus or minus the blocks, which is what I was trying to anticipate when I was showing you the data today, because if we take voluntary transfer away, if you looked at those numbers, you'll find some schools, the live-in number is pretty small, which means then there's room in those schools. So the question that I think we should be asking ourselves is, which building blocks do we move into those schools? And that, I think, then helps us, as we get to that November thirteenth date, to say, oh, there's room here, can, if it's a high-FRL school, can we move in a low-FRL neighborhood? If it's a low-FRL school, can we move in a high-FRL neighborhood? Can we start closing the gap simply around the edges of the approved nineteen-twenty area by moving some of those building blocks that you've already identified for the, for us, and we've shared that data with you? I think that's the next step in the process, which is what Lori had anticipated in that request that she made, that Adam was working on while we were talking up there.
I guess one of the things that I struggle with is, like, I guess I would need to see it two different ways, like with voluntary transfers and without voluntary transfers.
Sure.
Because when I think about, for example, the Breckenridge Lemmy thing, in my head, I was like, we'll leave one section there and move the other section out, but if you take away voluntary transfers, there's sixty seats there, whatever, and that sliver of Lemmy that we're moving just to make space possibly could still stay there if those seats were the same.
Correct. That's a, that's a great example, because that's one of the things that we looked at, because in our earlier discussion, we were operating under the idea that the status quo was in place. So a lot of what you were asking about was, what if we swap these two? But in some cases, we don't need to swap, because there's extra seats available if we change the voluntary transfer process. Then it's a question of moving in, not necessarily moving out, in some cases. Or you get a school like Wood, Wood has to be a move out, but not a move in, because there are so many kids that are out right now, that if you take voluntary transfer and say, live in the neighborhood, go to school in the neighborhood, you won't be moving students in. We'll just be moving students out in order to right-size the school. Then the question we ask is, which are the right students to move out, so we get a better balance inside the school?
That'd be another.
So I think we can run them both ways, to your, to your point, sorry for interrupting. I think Adam and I can run them both ways, both without and with.
And then the other, like, the other thing that I struggle with is I'm pretty visual, so, like, in my notes, and I write down, like, okay, if we do no voluntary transfer, and then we wanna do a pairing, you know, like, I just start thinking about, like, we've talked about before, those dominos, or whatever they are. You know, if we're moving Lakewood, it's supposed, it's coming from Twain to Alexander, but we're gonna put it maybe in Longfellow, and then if we pair that school, then, you know, they would be back with, so then it doesn't even make sense just to leave them at Twain for one more year, if we pair them, then, you know, so I, like, there's a lot of what-ifs out there, and without, like, having something on the board where you kinda draw.
Yeah, your what if needs to be this variable, this variable, this variable, and this variable, all those together, that's what that looks like.
Yeah.
We're keeping them all independently.
And when we talk building blocks, I guess that's where the more I look at it, like, voluntary transfers is, and I, like, when I think building blocks, I think Legos, that's the lower one, and now you're adding the next Lego on top of that, because that happened, and then, you know, to make your full, whatever you're doing. So that's kinda where I struggle, which is maybe why I haven't sent you some of the questions.
Sure.
Because I don't.
Well, that's, to be honest with you, we've struggled with that too, which is why we pushed on the voluntary transfer, because you almost get to the point where you're stacking so many variables, and you can't make a decision where you say, oh, well, what would this look like if there was voluntary process, voluntary transfer in place? But over here, we're gonna look at it without it. So we almost looked at it as kinda some forks in the decision-making process, that if we can get this one solved, it limits the number of variables we have, so then we can graphically represent it a little bit better for you, because there's not so much variability in that mix.
Then I guess the final piece of what I would have to say about that is that, now that we're getting requests from schools that are talked about a lot, to come meet with their PTOs, like, our, we haven't, like I said, we haven't made a decision or anything, and some of that may change, so if we go and meet with them, with what we're talking about, it may be different based on decisions we make, so that's kinda my hesitance for going out to schools right now to say, this is what we're thinking of doing, from everybody else's thought, and I, I know I want their input, it's just, I would hate to get out there and say, yep, we're gonna do this, or we're thinking about doing this, and maybe it's something over here.
Going back to, can I start with your first comment about voluntary transfer? I think also, we, what we look at for what's happening now is just the slice of what it will potentially be if we don't address it, but change the boundaries. So I think it's hard to predict what, how many students would choose to transfer out with different boundaries. Might be a lot more. Might be, you know, a lot of kids saying, well, I was at this school before, you know, I'm in the fourth grade, really wanna finish there, and stay there regardless of the boundaries. There might be a lot more. I'm guessing that there probably would be.
Right. But we can't make, like, we can't move forward until we make that decision, that long-term out.
Exactly.
I mean, I, you know, we have two weeks to make this vote, and I, you know, I know I'm, I guess, let me ask one question, just about voluntary transfer, which is probably this, that's way too complicated. Um, it, you know, there are families, probably very few, who are moving into high-FRL schools on purpose.
Right.
And I, that's what we want, I mean, that's the kinda thing we want. I don't think that we could zero it down that much, I don't know.
Yes, you could. I actually went out and looked at some voluntary transfer policies in other districts, and they have what the, for lack of a better way to describe it, it's a one-way valve.
Oh.
So they're saying you could go in or go out, depending on whether or not you are impacting the demographics in your school in the direction that the board would like to see. So if it's a school that's disproportionately high in special ed students, you can go in or out. ELL students, you can go in or out. Minority students, free and reduced lunch students. So there are policies out there that do that.
See, I, I like to look at that, because I think, um, one of the things, you know, we know from research works, is when parents choose to send their kids to a school, that, they'll stick there, they'll stay with it, they're generally more engaged then in that school, and that just is also my anecdotal experience, a couple of things who do it alone. Um, and then we got the email from a family who enrolled into Grandpa for the same reason, that they wanted that experience, and so, um, and frankly, Sean, I'm really sensitive to your comment too about staff, you know, I, I believe those are some, some good reasons. And if it's legal to sort of track that, I think encouraging that sort of parental choice, because that's not gonna hurt our numbers or sort of bounds go, that's only gonna help. If we say, you can enroll into a high-FRL school, because right now with the M model, I mean, that's a great incentive, you know, my daughter has fifteen kids in her secondary class, I mean, that just by itself could be a reason for folks to want to move into a high-FRL school. And I think, as we have policies that encourage parental choice towards where we want it, because, I, you know, I haven't met too many people who, once they show up at these schools, are like, heck no, get it now. It's usually parents who, who are coming in with blind, and they don't know, they're just looking at a Zillow rating, and they're not, they're making a decision without knowledge. And so if we could capture that, I mean, that, those two, you know, the staff question and this sort of families that are moving into high-FRL schools, uh, and again, with the staff thing, I'm not saying we need to have that, I'm just, I am thinking about that, and I, I really appreciate Sean's comment about supporting our staff in that way. Um, kinda with those things, to me, I, I mean, I, frankly, I don't get as much movement as I wanted, um, and that's unfortunate, but we get some movement, and it allows us to make these other decisions, and, and know, have way more certainty on the impact. You know, one, everything at our AAD meeting the other day, the families, one woman said, well, what, what if all of these families do, I go buy homes in other places? And I think the truth of that happening is, there are probably very few families in this district who literally go buy a home anywhere they want to. I don't think that's, that's a pretty narrow group of folks, so I don't think that's gonna hit our numbers too far. Um, so that's where I'm at, I'm like, okay, I'm ready, not, I don't necessarily wanna see, I mean, if the board feels split, and the board's like, this restricted model isn't a good idea, and we think that maybe this isn't gonna go through, or we won't follow admin's recommendation, maybe look at with or without, but I don't wanna send them, them back to their work if we feel fairly confident that either with some tweaks, or we feel good restricting this voluntary transfer, because we need this piece, we need the Lego down before we start on top of it, and it lets us do that.
Yeah. I guess I would just caution on making that decision before we have an actual vote at the table, so that's why I would want them with or without.
Yeah, I, I hear, I, well, I hear you. I don't know that, I mean, if it's in two weeks, is, do we?
Keep in mind, you've got a discussion here at this table, potentially, well, or at Southeast, on the second, then a discussion up at the board table on the ninth, because we wanna make sure, remember that was part of our conversation, is we wanna make sure that the community has plenty of opportunity to come in and share, and then we can talk about it. Um, and then, because of the way that October is set up, right, so then we've got the sixteenth back here, and then we've got the twenty-third, where we can potentially take a vote on voluntary transfer at the front table. Then that gives us two work sessions, on the thirtieth and the sixth of November, where we're back here, where we can talk about, based on a decision that you may make on the twenty-third, we've got two work sessions to build out, I'm now looking at the, what we call it, Wood version two with no Northwood, what, what elementary attendance areas could look like, given the changes to voluntary transfer, and moving of some of the, the blocks that you're looking at, before we get to the thirteenth. So you've got a little space in there, got an extra week in there, where we've got some conversation we can have.
I have enough time.
Yeah, and it's the conversation.
That feels to me to be very, very tight. I, I feel like we need to be looking at those ahead of that decision, especially.
Yeah, oh, no, no, I agree with that, I definitely agree with that, I'm just saying that I wanted you to keep in mind, you're gonna have a few weeks after that, you're gonna have three weeks after that before.
I was gonna say, especially for community input.
Oh, yeah.
Right, and, and that's, yeah, you're absolutely right, and that's the thing, are, and are we counting as community input, just somebody pulling a, community comments?
Well, that's one option, the other, I think, are the meetings.
Because I really think this is, this is the type of a thing, that we're gonna need a panel with you, and Matt, and Amy, and, and people in the community being able to ask questions, and I forget exactly what we call, uh, that type of a, of a gathering that way, but I think with, you know, with what we're doing with, we need to start having something along those lines, so the community feels that their voice, that they have a chance to interact.
Well, I know you had, one of the things that we added to the list of community and school outreach meetings, where we added the, the PTOs that have requested board presentations on there, and I know that there was also a conversation about, do you need to have a, a broader board engagement process too as part of that? So I know that's one of those things, we didn't add it to the list, but definitely, I think there's space to add that in there.
Yeah, DPOs and PTOs, and, and that, that's a limited, that's, that's a limited.
No, it was the PTOs that had asked, I think.
Oh, okay, okay, but, you know, we've, we've gotta give the community a chance to weigh in before we.
Are you specifically talking about the voluntary transfer part?
Right, right, no, the voluntary, because, you know, we gotta get a known good, I'm talking about, and with, with so many variables and everything, we have got to wrap that one up, and, and we've imposed a deadline on ourselves to, to get it to a point where we have that one established. And we have gotta go out to the public and discuss that one, in my view, and get the input, work on our, you know, following down on, on our decisions, because, you know, there are so many different things that are gonna age out in it, and people need to be aware, get a chance to absorb that, other than just however the paper's gonna record tonight, or what, how they're following it. And I think there's gotta be an opportunity for the community to come in and ask staff, and ask us, and, and see where we're at on that, and then, then when we go to a vote, it, it can be looked upon that we truly sought the community's input, instead of just, well, they've got an opportunity to come here and ask a question, which we can't reply, respond to because of open meetings law. So that's, that's my thought on it.
I, I think the input process is gonna be very important throughout this whole thing. I do think that when you look at the pairing idea and boundary changes, we've already had quite a bit of commentary, either by email, or people coming to talk, or at some of these listening folks that we have, or these presentation meetings, and it's been, in my experience, depending on the audience, but it's been fairly kinda half and half, right? Um, my concern with having community input specifically around voluntary transfer would, again, I'm not saying that's a bad thing, because we need it, but you've got seven hundred kids who are voluntary transferring, I think the families of those seven hundred kids will overwhelm any input session over the rest of these seven thousand kids' families, right? Because it's a lot easier to say, well, it's my voluntary transfer they're taking away, and everybody's like, whatever, I don't care, I'm not doing it. It, it's gonna be hard to get a balanced opinion on a topic that hits ten percent of the people specifically.
Well, my, my rationale on that is, is that we're, we're in our short, medium, and long term. Pairing is medium, right? Uh, so, but voluntary transfer, that's something we gotta, we gotta do quick.
It's imminent, yeah.
And not to say that, you know, it, we can have the broad, you can have the broad discussion, if you have the broad discussion, that thing's gonna go all over the place. And it's gonna, and are we really gonna get the information we're trying to get with the community on the voluntary transfer, which is what we're gonna be acting on, first off? That's my own, that, that totally, that's, that's my thought on that. But, but I know, we've gotta get that bigger, that broader discussion going too.
And I, you know, I'm all authoritarian, but I think I know exactly what we're here, which is, this works for my family, don't change it. I mean, that, so the email we got this week from the parent of Lincoln, um, that's right, that's true for your situation, and I feel for that, and, you know, my response is, to all of those is, we're doing bigger picture things. And, and so I, and I think we're considering, to me, considering the grandfathering, saying, you know, we have a system for some people to remain in place, it considers those things. I, I don't know what input we'll get, I mean, we, people maybe will feel heard, and maybe that's its own.
That's part, well, and, and that's.
Transparency.
That's exactly it. If you don't do it, and you go to a decision, you can have a roomful of people coming in justifiably saying, when the hell, you, you guys talk about transparency, you talk about all these things, and community engagement, when did you offer us a chance to come in and discuss this? And you, and if you do it, and you have seventy people that come in, and they have their particular little thing, at least they have a chance to feel heard. And the worst thing you can do, I feel, and like I say, a lot of this is how I come at this, is that, is to have somebody who has a concern with their most precious possession in their life, and they didn't get an opportunity to interact with staff, and, and ask questions, and pose it to us, other than an email, or other than getting up in front of the community and, and having four minutes to, to, to express their concerns, but not being in a forum where there can be any interaction.
Yeah, so I am thinking about how we did this when we did the bell schedule change, which obviously was a huge change for the district, we did two, I think, community sessions, and what we did is, we had a presentation that laid out what we're facing, in terms of budget cuts, in terms of, um, uh, recommendations by, you know, physicians, different things. We laid out all of the facts that the board is looking at, and would be considering when they make their decision. And then we had, we broke into small groups, started in small groups, but, um, we had the folks discuss it, um, understanding all of the things that the board is looking at, so that they don't just come in with, this is my agenda, this is all about me, it's, this is not just about you, this is about a lot of different things. And, and then, we actually, I actually gave tickets out when people came in the door, and I assigned them to tables, so that they could not sit with somebody that's their next-door neighbor, so that they could not, um, I, I wanted people to intentionally miss, so they could hear somebody else's perspective. And that was very helpful, and yes, we heard a lot of people that said, absolutely, do not make a change, absolutely, this is gonna mess everything up for my family. But it gave them an opportunity to participate and understand the difficult position that the board was in, so that when we made the decision, I think the community was well-informed and understood, and it all agreed.
So we hear in a various fashion ideas about how to go about community engagement. The last time voluntary transfers were restricted, what did we do for that change? How did we interact with the community?
We did not have community engagement on it in that format that Lori described. We talked about it in the education committee, we talked about it at the board table, we heard from people through community forum, through community comment, and then we decided. And probably that's because it wasn't eliminating it, right?
This is the flash figure.
Yes.
Right. It's still present, you know, people, people were frustrated that they had to go year to year, but that didn't seem like it was as big a thing as getting rid of it. So I don't think it was quite the flashpoint that this might be.
And I see that as a transition, I think this is better policy, frankly, if you're gonna have it, not have this year-to-year, personally. Um, and in the context of community engagement, I mean, frankly, I know, if I was gonna talk to the community, one, I would be including our attendance area development, this is one of the reasons we're considering this, and two, give folks the history lesson and no child left behind, why we have this in the first place, and why this is still a remnant of really terrible educational policy that, in the past, we had to abide by, we couldn't say no, and we were paying to transport kids for really shallow reasons that aren't, you know, test course, literally test courses, it's, it's, and so, I think if folks understand some of that context, um, I think that's helpful for them to, to be able to understand why, why we're considering this, and I think, you know, people do feel heard. I don't know what that looks like, I don't know, I mean, we've got a super tight timeframe, so we're talking about doing that in the next month.
Yeah.
And, you know.
With maybe a couple PTO meetings in, in, you know, I'm just saying, I've already signed up for like a couple more things that, that.
I mean, I think the PTO meetings, the ones that we've had requested from, was the, uh, Longfellow, Twain, Borlaugh, and Hoover, because Hoover mainly wants to know, where the heck are we going? And Longfellow, the other three, it's more surrounding pairing, which I don't know if we're, we've landed in a particular place to go in, especially for Borlaugh, to say, pairing you with Kirkwood is what we're talking about. Right, but what I'm saying, I, I don't even know if we're at that stage yet to be able, I mean, you saw at our meeting, there was a lot of questions, I mean, they want specific answers, and.
And I, and I still find value in saying, there aren't any, you're a part of this process right now, what you say now informs this. And I know people aren't happy, but.
Right.
I felt that, at every single meeting, people walked away with a deeper understanding. Um, and more often than not, a more, at least a more positive feedback at the end, I mean, Phil, one year and I, where I was very, people were coming from very different places, but I felt everybody came away with a better understanding than they came in with, and I felt that was valuable. And I think that is, I mean, I know people aren't used to it.
Mm-hmm.
But to say, this is the honest truth, believe it or not, we don't have the secret plan we're hiding from you, okay, there'd be a transparent, because it's, you know, I think it puts us, it's pretty uncomfortable to stand up there and say, nah, I don't have the answer to your question, and I can't even tell you when we're gonna come to that, but it's honest, because not everybody's listening to these work sessions, not everybody's coming. I invite them every time, but, so.
One, one point maybe, um, question, I guess, is how you guys have measured this up. Would you do some sort of community outreach meeting on voluntary transfers, like, the bell schedule's a specific topic on bell schedule, so would this, would you envision this to be a specific topic on voluntary transfers? Because I can see it starting that way and going this way, you know, about some of the other stuff we're talking about. Would the goal be to be very specific, this is about voluntary transfers?
Yeah, that's my, that would be my thought, is that at this stage of the game, that's what we're looking at, that's our next decision, so, you know, we can entertain questions, you know, as individuals possibly, but when we're talking, um, and presenting, we're talking about voluntary transfer, we're not gonna get into the weeds on, on any other stuff, because we don't have answers.
Yeah, that, and, exactly, and I think that'd be part of the, part of the presentation.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Right, is that, you know, this is, this is the first step, this is the first block. We gotta, we gotta solve this one first, we'll discuss it, if somebody brings up the pairing, or something like that, yes, that's something we're looking at, but right now, that's, that's the second one, that's the second, third decision. Right now, this is our first decision. And so you just, you know, and I know with the, uh, bell schedule thing, that, you know, it would get drifted into some other things, and you just have to bring it back in, that's all.
I guess I'm, I'm in agreement that this is kind of the first domino, I'm a little concerned that the timeframe between making the decision on voluntary transfer and making the decision on, uh, changing attendance areas is not a long time, and I don't know that we can say, yep, we're gonna eliminate voluntary transfer, and then, ah, crap, what are we gonna do with Kirkwood? Because you can't end voluntary transfer without doing something with Kirkwood and Coglin Wood, and a couple other places there, to say, we'll figure that out in the next four weeks before we vote again, is asking an awful lot.
Now, the one thing I'd remind you, and that's one of the reasons that I gave you the data stretched out, is, I think, an important consideration, and it may be at that general meeting, when you're talking to parents who come in, they're gonna wanna know, slide fifteen, they're gonna wanna know, am I, my grandfather?
Right.
So if you think about our high-neat schools, are the schools that are far more likely to have had SINA kids, so those are the kids that might have the three-year runout, they may have more of the grandfathered students who were the permanent applicants that we grandfathered in, that said, we will allow you to finish, those are the two-year runouts. So when you look at, which I'm presuming is what you're looking at, Sean, you're looking at some of those numbers on the live-in chart, and going, oh my goodness, you're gonna have some schools that are filled to the gills, um, if we end voluntary transfer. My only caution on that would be, not all of those kids will be there the next year, because you're gonna have a three-year, two-year, one-year runout on SINA permanents and sixth grade capstone kids.
I was trying to pull up, uh.
I think, I will see if we can pull those, we're working on that right now, our attendance department's trying to pull those up for us.
Twenty-one? And I'm just wondering, when Kirkwood will get out?
Not, not twenty-one.
Right. I'm just wondering if there is some way to use the plan, the FMP, to help set either grandfathering or either other dates, and say, you know what, we're going to do it, but maybe we have to wait till this school fix, or, or we have a very tight turnaround on fixing boundaries around there, because I, I look at, if you look at Wood, right, we briefly looked at Steve. Because I, I look at, if you look at Wood, right, we briefly looked at Steve Land before coming in here, you know, you look at seventy-six percent, seventy-five percent, like, turn it on and off, that doesn't sound so bad, but when you look at the two-hundred-and-thirty-two kids up to three-hundred-and-thirty kids that qualify for, for R, right, like, that's, that's a hundred more kids, while your overall total is the same, you're packing the school with, you know, you're just making it bigger, but the same, and Kirkwood, you know, obviously you overpacked it, it's already overpacked, right? And you're packing even more, with that, I mean, yes, the number is going down a little bit as a percent, but it's a pretty significant increase in kids.
This is without ram.
Yeah.
Correct.
Less rams, and it's even more, I mean, it's even harder.
So I, it's going to be hard for me to talk about voluntary transfer as a standalone thing, I guess was my point of that rambling I did, but. I, as far as, what are these meetings, is it specifically voluntary transfer, do we narrow it to that, knowing at the same time we're all in the background doing all the other things, I don't know how you stop it from heading down that path in any conversation.
And this is just something to think about, and I know we wind up, this winds up being like one of those six-sided Rubik's cubes, but this is something to think about. So Kirkwood is a great example. So if you look at the numbers for Kirkwood, right now, there's three-hundred-and-fifty-two kids there, there's four-hundred-and-twelve kids that live in, okay? And to Sean's point, you know, you look at that and you say, okay, so it's, you know, seventy-nine percent FRL now, it's seventy-seven percent FRL then, well, wait a minute, that doesn't make that big a difference. But what you have to look at is, there are sixty kids in that list that are voluntarily transferring out. The sixty kids that are voluntarily transferring out are about a fifty-fifty split, FRL, non-FRL, but the attendance area is eighty percent FRL, non-FRL. So there's a disproportionate number of students that do not qualify for free and reduced lunch that are leaving Kirkwood. So that's, I, I think that's where the opportunity is, because that way you say, okay, we're going to move those students back in, and now if we look at right sizing that attendance area, we say, in order to make sure that there are only enough students in there to fill the seats, some students are going to need to move, which attendance area do they need to move to, and which students are they that we move, because that's where you get the return. Because that's where you say, this neighborhood moves, I'll use Boston Way because we looked at it before, Boston Way moves out, it either moves north or south, right, we're either going to move it to Van Allen or we're going to move it to Borlaugh, okay? Now you can right-size Kirkwood, and, and I'm just thinking of the contiguous ones, which we could make that contiguous, but, so, you know, you move it out, and now the population of students that remains is going to bring the FRL number down. Now, the problem is, it's like, you're tipping over all kinds of dominos as you go through that, and I don't know the right way, I don't know if there is a right way to go about doing that, but that's where our big win is, and I don't know which end of the thread you pull first, you know, to start unraveling it.
Start pulling the thread, I mean, to me, this voluntary transfer is a piece that's sticking out, that you gotta start there.
And I understand where Sean's coming, coming from, because he says, geez, you say, okay, we're going to capitate voluntary transfer, yes, we'll figure out the grandfather pieces that come in, but oh my goodness, now what do we do with Kirkwood, I can't have that many kids packed into Kirkwood, I gotta move some of those kids, and so now all of a sudden, you have what feels like some very forced choice moves, very short. Now, the one thing that we haven't done yet, because we're paddling like crazy under the surface of the water while you're doing this, and sometimes having a hard time keeping up, but one of the things that Adam and I talked about was, can we go back now that we have this information, how many neighborhoods are there that need to be moved in order to get the numbers to work out? Is it five, is it ten, is it fifty? If it's five, that's a really different discussion spread out over six weeks than if it's fifty. If you're only looking at it and saying, well, geez, we really only need to move five or six building blocks in order to try to get some balance, that gives us some room to maneuver.
And we have, I mean, we've been, I mean, we've been working on this for a year, and we've, we have some really good ideas, I mean, I don't think, I don't.
You've identified some great building blocks.
I don't feel that we're like miles away from this. I, you know, I do feel that, I think we're going to get into, you know, we eliminate voluntary transfer, but we're going to have to put ourselves into some forced choice if we're going to make decisions, because we can't, you can't just put it off and delay it, and, and frankly, you know, I'll put this out there, that, you know, there's four open seats in November, I don't want all of this work to go away, because that's the history in this district, is you get a turnover and, and all of the work the board and the admin did just takes a one-eighty turn and it's gone. And a lot of people who step out and do that, oftentimes, if they're running for seats, they're, they've got like a passionate issue, not, but they sure as heck haven't been digging in this deep for the most part, and, and understanding all of the things we understand. So I, I hate to see all this work sort of go away just because people are mad that their kid didn't get voluntarily transferred, or, or they just hate the idea of pairing for whatever reason. So, so I think if we get ourselves into more of a situation where maybe we're making a forced choice, but it's a well-informed choice, it's moving us in the direction, it's based on all the work everybody's been doing, and, you know, I bet it isn't fifty neighborhoods, right? It's probably more like five or six, or less than ten, you know, where, where we could make sort of a big change along with some of these other changes and get closer to, you know, closer to where we want to be.
Now, one of the things, and Craig's not here, so I can save this, but you're not going to tell him, so don't put that on tape. You know, keep in mind that between now and 2021, when we're done with the round of the FMP, the goal is to move people from, move students and staff from modulators into buildings. But we anticipate that between now and then, we're still going to have modulators. So one of the questions we have to ask ourselves is, where are the modulators? So you might look at it and say, okay, voluntary transfer gets restricted, we know that school X is going to have their work done in the 2021 school year, in the last year of the FMP, we know what the capacity is going to be at the end of that, do we right-size that population for when that work is done, and maybe have to move a couple of modulators onto the property to get us through that next two years? That's where Craig goes nuts, because Amy and I are always like, let's just move these around, you can't just move them around, I understand, but I'm just saying, that's something to think about, because that may give you a little more flexibility than you see right now, because it allows you to grow, that population to grow into their building as it gets the, the addition done.
I guess that is an answer, I don't say it's an answer.
Right.
To what I'm looking at with Kirkwood, right?
Yes.
So it's sort of changed, I mean, and then if you also then look, well, their FRL number's still really high, so it seems like we're going to want to be doing something anyway, right?
Yeah.
And you're talking October vote and then November vote.
Yeah.
Right? And, and you mentioned, you know, going to some of these meetings and standing up there going, well, you know what, I don't really know what the plan is, we're talking about this, this, and this, and this, and it's looking at, you know, it's pairing, as, you know, Phil said it's kind of the medium term, and maybe Magnus is the long term, or other things, and it's a very long-term basis. If I go to a meeting, you know, at this point, in the next like two weeks, to talk about voluntary transfer, and somebody says, if you stop voluntary transfer, Kirkwood's going to have this huge number of kids added, what's your plan there? And I still have to say, well, we'll have to move some people out, but I don't really know what it is.
Yeah.
When are you going to make that decision? And the answer is, well, two weeks from now? And I still don't know the answer? I don't want to stand up there and say that. I, I don't know how to separate those two.
I can tell you I shouldn't be at the meeting, because Adam won't say, I mean, I, you know, me, I'll go, I'll go off there anyway. I'm always full on, so, because I, it's hard for me to compartmentalize that, because one necessarily leads to the other, and so that's why I'm, I think, I'm like, well, have me, I'll stand up for him anyway, and say like, I don't know, sorry.
You got that recorded, right?
Yeah.
Do you care about that?
Shoot, I was going to say, I wasn't going to go with this.
Well, I think it's, I think I've come to the realization that we, we're not going to have all the answers to all, everything, as Phil said, there's going to be short-term, medium-term, long-term. We may not know what that long-term is, but as long as we're working towards that, then I think that's, I mean, like, I, I really don't want to, you know, when we started this, there was a, I guess, a fear that we were going to be like, all right, here's eight schools, we're pairing them, non-rechange, did it, you know, this is not going to happen that way, so, you know, I think it's okay not to know some of that, as long as we're working towards it.
Well, yeah, and I, you know, that's the, when I walk away from these meetings, I do get the sense that people feel that it's a movement, that it's in a direction, you know, I mean, I love to bring in, you know, and we have the one slide about things we're doing now, I mean, I, well, obviously Laura Cottrell did a whole presentation on things we're doing now, and that could be a whole other topic for me to be talking to, but, but, I, I mean, I don't know, I mean, that's another sense, is people feel better having, now whether they believe that we still don't have the secret plan, I don't know. But I think when they're at those meetings, I do think people walk away.
Yeah, I think so.
You know.
And I, I think.
Understanding we don't have this plan.
Between now and having community meetings, we're still, if Steve was able to give us the handy little calendar, if we're looking at community meetings before that October 23rd, that leaves like somewhere after the ninth, and before the 23rd, that we can possibly hold two meetings. So there's still opportunities for us to talk about the impact based on some of the questions and different attendance zones that we raised here, especially with the Kirkwood situation, that we may have a semblance of, yes, if we do X, then this is how we would address those numbers at Kirkwood or schools that we see larger numbers, or larger number of kids.
Because I think we've identified most of those.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, I mean, it's, we, we, we might go in there with a better developed plan, not necessarily all the answers, but something that sort of says, yes, if we restrict or get, do away with voluntary transfer, like have these caveats based on our conversations next week and then the ninth, because we're going to talk about voluntary transfer at the board table, and then again, if need be, at the work session on the ninth. So if we're talking about going, offering an opportunity to meet with the community, I think we need to look at our calendars to say, what day will that be? To allow people the true opportunity, if the purpose of that meeting is to take that information for us and digest it, I'm not doing a community meeting the day before we're supposed to vote on it, because that's just, I mean, that's not something that I think realistically, we're going home and really internalizing what we heard, so I think we would have to look at maybe the seventeen, the eleven, both days to offer enough time, but I don't know if that would be feasible for staff.
You know, and, and keep in mind, this is, this is kind of the, we gave you the all-in, right? So there are other things that you can think about as you go through this process, me and I have had these conversations, we said, this is for all kids for nineteen, twenty, when you talk about voluntary attendance or voluntary transfer. You, I know you've gotten communications from people who are already inside the system, so kind of the, I don't know, it's kind of the NIMBY idea right now in my backyard, so they've said, okay, you want to get rid of voluntary transfer, that's fine, do it with kids next year. All right? So that would be maximum grandfathering, that we're not going to do anymore after this year. Well, the only reason I bring that up is because that pushes your runout even further, but to Sean's earlier point, it puts less pressure on a Kirkwood, because all those kids don't come back in year one, it takes them four or five years for them to come back. So we gave you all-in, and, and I think it's definitely worth considering, that's why we put it out on the table. In the end, my argument is, is still going to be that unless voluntary transfer goes away, you are always going to create an opportunity for people to circumvent the work that you're doing. So the most important thing, in my opinion, for you to think about as a board, and timing may be an issue, right? There may not be enough time to go all-in on this one, but the most important thing that I think that you need to think about moving forward is, how do you begin to constrain that process such that at some point in time, you don't have that escape clause that prevents your work from actually bearing fruit? How do you do that? So, because one of the things that I'm hearing right now, and, and please correct me, because I'm just, I'm listening and I'm trying to take that in, just a great deal of apprehension about what feels to be an incredibly accelerated process, not enough time to get input from the community, fear about making a decision that won't be supported because there wasn't enough time for that input. You know, as Phil said, not just giving people the opportunity to come to the community comment, but where is actually there a community forum for it? So maybe a softer, gentler approach to it as you phase it in. I'm not saying that I necessarily endorse that, but I'm just saying that that's, that's something for you to think about if, as you're going through and we're thinking out loud together as a group, and you're worried about the timing.
So, I'm trying to follow you, so you're saying you do away with voluntary transfers.
For all new people next year.
For all new people next year.
Yeah.
But it still applies to next year.
People who are in the system could continue to.
People who are in the system this year.
They could apply.
They can apply.
Right.
Under the same.
It's similar to what we did with West and Liberty.
Yeah.
We said the juniors and seniors, actually, it wasn't me, it was the board before me that said that juniors and seniors could stay at West.
It was you, it was our board.
No, it wasn't, no, no, I know it wasn't. It was the, we, we endorsed later, but as we, when we looked at the second year, we kept it, but it was the juniors and seniors.
Yeah, and I voted on keeping.
It doesn't matter, but the juniors and seniors, that's what I'm talking about, is the same situation where it'd be said, finish your days out, but for everyone new.
Right.
They're going to Liberty.
And so in that model too, these other groups that are going to age out, they're a year closer to being turned, to being off the books anyway.
Right.
Because you're starting the clock a year later.
So we got a group of Sina kids that we know have a three-year runout, it's a fairly small group of kids. We've got a group of kids that were permanent applicants, and they've got a two-year runout, we know that, no, I just did that the other way around, didn't I? No, that's the right way.
Be careful how you bring your fingers.
Sina kids, I'm going this way.
Not in the long-term, but in the short-term.
And then, and then we've got the, the kids that are sixth grade capstone, right? So we know we already have that three-year runout, so the question is, for you, if timing becomes an issue where you don't feel like you can make that decision, I would argue you would be better off to say, okay, well, we'll allow a four-year runout. Because at some point in time, I'm still going to argue that if you don't figure out how to close the door, you can't make a difference.
Can I throw one other thing?
Yes, please.
Okay, so thinking back just to the one other example that I had to work through, Mark DeWeber, small group of students, those families were required to go to Weber, with the exception of the sixth graders staying. Okay, so it's somewhat similar, but not, because I didn't have parents come back to me saying, or I didn't know this, that they were voluntarily transferred out to a different building either. So my question is, given the scale that we're about to enter into again.
Yeah.
That was what we did, but we said, you know, and I think back to your Liberty, we all, but we said, who had to go, right, with the change.
I think that's been pretty standard, I mean, that happened to us when Garner opened, we had no choice in that, we were going to Garner.
See, I, I understand people want to be heard, I, and I respect that, I also don't, that happens, it happens, where you're told where you're going to go, and I don't, I don't believe anybody's really harmed in it. If you're harmed in it, there's good cause, there's bullying, if there's health reasons, right? And then we're talking about, well, maybe if, you know, you're, you're moving into a school helps our goals or staff, so I don't, I mean, I, I know people say things like, this will destroy my child's life, I don't believe that's true. I work with lots of children with destroyed lives, whose lives actually aren't destroyed, they're very resilient, I'm moving a school. Moving a school is a big deal, but it is not, um, especially when you're moving to schools in Iowa City, and you're talking about one great school to another great school. And you're gonna be away from your friends, and you will make more friends. Now, if a kid is so highly anxious that they have a hard time with that, to me, that, that's a health reason. I, I do understand that. So, I, because to me, I'm like, well, wow, we're already talking about a three-year run-out for a lot of kids, so some kids are already gonna stay in the system, and, and so I don't, I mean, I want to hear people, but I don't feel the need to put it off another year, or have some kids who now are gonna be in, and if it's not just a capstone, and they're like in it this year, and their child's in kindergarten, five years of being able to go to that school and apply. And so I don't, I mean, at some point, we do tear a band-aid off and say, and I know on hard kids, you know, like when we were talking about, um, move the building blocks, people say, you know, are those kids really gonna be accepted at that school? I'm like, that is something to consider, and we need to consider that anyway. You feel that any child goes to any school and they're not gonna be accepted. We're, one, we're already working on that, and maybe that increases your, to that work. So, to me, I mean, I just kind of know where I'm at, I wanna hear the community, I do. I also know how much time I've been putting in here, hearing and trying to get up to the community, um, personally, and I, and, and I'm, we all have jobs and families and, and other stuff that we do, that is, it's, I mean, these are all real things that, um...
Alright, I'm gonna play the get us back on track game, because I guess it would make me feel better, because I just said, I feel like a short timeframe between deciding voluntary transfer and some of these building blocks and boundary changes, we've been sitting here talking, uh, I think we're at like fifty-five minutes now. The first topic of building blocks, we've been talking about building blocks, we've been talking about voluntary transfer the whole time.
Well, I think-
So, I have specific questions on some of the stuff, I actually like the chart that's in the voluntary transfer piece that you showed us with some of the, uh, twenty-one, or the eighteen, I guess it is, nineteen-twenty.
Yeah.
With the capacity. So, the first question I had was, uh, around Lincoln. One in my head, I thought when they were done doing this build, it was more than two forty. And I know there was the potential for future expansion there, but two forty seemed like a little small capacity number. Even at, like, knowing that there was future expansion, but that seemed like a small number. And the other part that is weird to me is that, that, that number shrinking for the enrollment is going down from, with all the living.
Because there are a lot of transfers into Lincoln, but not a lot of people live in.
That tells me there's a, well, one, if two forty is the accurate number, there's still space there, but two forty seems like a small number. So, it seems like that's a place where we could put some kids as a potential, just from looking at these numbers. So, for some reason, this is easier for me to kind of look at where we need to do things. I've already talked about how I feel about the number of Kirkwood and, and Woods kind of saying, well, yes, they're still under capacity, but you're adding a good chunk of kids that, you know, high up there, so, I'm just trying to think of using that data, if it's isolating any other spots that we can talk about. I think, when you were talking about, uh, I'm trying to remember exactly how you said it, but this whole process of getting that first down with the following, talk about all these things, we do have great ideas of building blocks to a lot of different pieces. I think Paul was right in saying that in order to kind of really jump in, it's, let's take those pieces and make a package out of it, right? If it's, if I build a block, and I build a block, and do a parent here, whatever it is, and take a voluntary transfer, then this school now looks like whatever it looks like, right? I think we really need to take those steps, get a package.
Yeah, and the longer we talk about it and don't get progress, we're more-
And we're having great conversations around each piece individually, I mean, we really are. But at some point, it's kind of, alright, slap it all together, that goes, I guess.
Yeah, I would say, Wickham has an opportunity to receive kids. They're gonna, there was an eighty-five.
Well, they've got, uh, when we're, they've got five seventy-five, and we get four hundred live-in, so there's a hundred and seventy-five seats at Wickham.
And it's not a random school, it's like, you know-
Right, you do truly have a hundred and seventy-five seats.
So, I, uh, I was looking for the numbers robustly, and I didn't find it, but-
Yeah, I think it's about seventy.
So, that, that's something, I mean, there's definitely room there.
So, maybe that, maybe as of moving forward as the package, I mean, identify where we have room, and then all of our building blocks, and then we can start to decide where, where they go, or what, what we're talking about, those more specific.
Next week?
Yeah, well, well, as I kind of mentioned, I don't know, it works for me, but it may not work for all of you. If at the next work session, we actually did some work, where we put up a big piece of paper on the wall and said, okay, here's this, here's the school that we need to look at, here's the building blocks we're talking about, kind of mapped it all out, so we go, here you go, run those numbers for us, so we can see where this is.
And maybe even ahead of that, they could identify, go through this, here's where there's capacity, one, because we have those numbers. Here are the building blocks we've already talked about. I mean, that's the start, those are the, if it's literal pieces we stick on the map, you could literally do that, right? Like, if it's, if you're visual learning, you wanna take the piece, stick it on, um, because that's gonna be key, where's capacity?
But I think you guys were gonna have that ready for us for next week, weren't you? Wasn't that what we talked about, October second?
We're working on it.
You? Your recommendations for, for where you got this change.
Adam and I are gonna, we're gonna be working on that.
Uh, because we're gonna need to identify some building blocks. Because, uh, you know, we don't know the neighborhoods, all the neighborhoods, and exactly where the cutoffs are at the number of kids.
Especially if there's capacity at low FRL schools. Because that, that's the easiest place to move our neighborhoods, are more concentrated into, that's the, I, I've looked at a lot of that, it's hard to find those, and I don't even wanna say it's a wealth, because just because you're not in FRL doesn't mean you're wealthy. But those pockets of non-FRL families don't, it's not as clean, clean neighborhoods, it's not as clean lines.
Yeah, maybe just looking at these numbers real quick, right? Wickham is a great place, Longfellow, that's quite a good, um,
Hoover East.
Hoover does, and be careful as to what pockets you put in there.
In your court?
P U.
And, and actually, some room up in North Liberty.
Yeah, P U.
And, that's where I'm at.
My only caution for you?
Is growth.
Is growth.
Well, right, yeah, and that's why, frankly, I think that's why North Liberty doesn't, because we've already got, I mean, that trajectory is, is, uh, yeah, we, yeah.
But we need to have space. So, uh, before, we were talking about the homeless kids and, uh, the shelters, and you mentioned that you had possibly some ideas that we haven't talked about explicitly yet.
We've already looked at them, so some of the, when you've asked for building blocks, one of the things that Adam and I have tried to do is try to say, would that building block incorporate one of the or more of our shelters and allow for a transition to another attendance area without identifying them? So, we've been working to try to draw our lines to meet your expectations and to provide a shift, so.
And have any of the building blocks that we've identified, for, for all the shelters, or just?
We were able to move two of them in one of your building blocks.
Okay, and were they in the same building block or two different building blocks?
They went to one building block and went to a school that we thought would be a good receiver.
Well, some of the shelters, we know where they're at, so it's, it's, uh, separate.
Yeah, there's really only one that we don't identify. The rest of them are all known, we just, we prefer not to put them on a map and not to talk about them. Yeah, and one of them is a confidential shelter.
Do we need to look at the other shelters?
Um, part of what we talked about, uh, was Twain does a wonderful job with the students. Their issue is, they just have so many. Uh, and, uh, they, I've talked to their staff, uh, at a recent staff meeting, and, and they were adamant that they're not interested in, in moving the shelters out, as in all the shelters. They are more than willing to retain more, uh, to retain, uh, a couple of the shelters. So, part of the process that we looked at was, because they, they're, they're, they're kids, they refer to them as their kids, right? So, they don't want to lose them, but at the same time, they recognize the burden that the community bears, the Twain community bears, by having all five in there, and that it's not fair to any of the kids there. So, their request was, can we keep two or three? Can you move two or three? So, as Adam and I went through, we said, I think we could move three, keep two. So, two to one school, one to another, two remain at Twain, that's a good distribution.
Well, that's kind of one of the benefits of, you know, if one of those schools is Longfellow, one of the benefits of parenting is you share that, um, staff and that expertise, and you don't lose that. And then ensuring that when you move them, somehow you transfer some of that expertise, whether that's training or what, but, so that we don't lose the support we can go into another school. But that, to me, that's one of the great benefits of parenting, is you get to really combine those supports, and now you have those great supports at both schools. But that's another little bit of a medium term.
Are you able to say, when, was it the North Alexander or the North Wood? Was it one of those two?
It was the Lakewood Building Block.
Oh, Lakewood, okay. Well, that's helpful, because what I was thinking is, I don't want to stake one and then put them into Longfellow and then Twain, I mean, I know this is opposite what you're saying.
We're trying not to do islands.
But then, then we're not.
We're trying not to do islands, so if you look at when we moved Lakewood, we moved it into Longfellow. So, if you remember that, so you take part of that north part as a hills, which will be honest, because there's no students there. Right, because that's the airport. Come up here, you go through the east side, or the west side, rather, the Twain attendance area, very, very few students. But two of those shelters, and then you connect it, it's connected to Longfellow.
But then if we pair them with Twain, then we just concentrated the shelters again.
With the exception of the fact that you have the students K two and three, pre-K two and three.
But we could put them somewhere else, and then they wouldn't be constantly, if we put them at Lincoln, for example.
Can I ask if, uh, some of those charts that we get, we also get, uh, the percents by ways, not just FRL, is that something we do?
Yes, yes, I, to be honest with you, we were just running short on time. Yeah, and we knew, we knew FRL was a, a key number for you.
I think that, uh, as I've talked to different folks, they, they grasp the concept of racial integration and see it as a positive thing, and just don't quite get the poverty aspect of it, right? And people are asking the question, well, are you trying to balance by race? Or are you trying to balance by socioeconomic status? And quite honestly, I'm trying to do both myself, right? We've been latching on to FRL numbers because it's the number that's out there, and we've seen this correlation of poverty to student success. But as I've gone through, and we've talked at different meetings, and we talk about the benefits of integration, your school looking like your community, and we're, we're not factoring that in with looking at the building blocks or anything else, and I, and while I know there's, you know, corollaries and, you know, crossover between all sorts of different ways you're gonna slice the pie, but it'd be nice to at least have that number to help inform movements.
Also, help inform the community members that not all poor, poverty students are black students. I think we heard that, and that's just a good way to dispel that, though.
I think that we move carefully, I don't think we can legally make assignments based on race.
Right.
Rest of that, so we just need to be wary that that's not a legal thing, because we can say, we're moving kids based on their race, but we can do SES, that's just under, you know, just-
I think my, my point was more just to say that-
Yeah, just to dispel those-
Oh, yeah, right. Poverty has no color.
Right.
It's, it's everywhere.
But I think what a lot of people, and I mean, we heard that tonight, think automatically, more black students.
Yeah, sure.
That's not, when you look at our numbers, we have more probably white students that fall within that, so I think that's going to be important. I think that's probably maybe one of the reasons why I, I would like to see the numbers too, because then that might help dispel that myth some from people.
Yeah, that's-
Yeah, it was one of the takeaways I had from one of our very early work sessions. And I think we, it was actually, I think, after, I don't remember what, it was, one of our invited guests to our table had mentioned that you can't just call people little FRLs, right? And that, that defines a person, and, and I've been trying to make sure that, as I'm giving presentations, that it's not just balancing FRL numbers on a spreadsheet to make things look good. There's meaning to it, and the positives of integration is, is there, whether it's by socioeconomic status or ways, like, there's reasons you want to change our demographics in our schools currently, and some of them, when, if you look at some of the race numbers, I mean, somebody sent an email, I think from Borlaug, that said, we're very diverse here at Borlaug, and if you look at the numbers by race, they really are. They have very good demographics there by race, socioeconomic status is not, or at least not as much as some of the other ones. But there are other schools that kind of go the other way, right? They're just not racially diverse either, and we need to keep that in our heads as, as part of the equation that we're trying to do too, it's not just just to have the extra number on the sheet, I think is a reasonable thing to have.
Going back to the building blocks, um, there's about ninety seats that would be available at Lundy. The Breckenridge is forty-seven. Would there be another group that you could pull out of Hoover East to lower their FRL, potentially, and?
There might be, yeah.
About Lundy. And I would ask, you know, I would wonder too, if maybe it makes sense to make that, um, the Lundy slice, to go ahead and move them, uh, to Hoover East, because it helps with the FRL situation.
Yeah, we haven't, you know, and you're exactly right when you were saying that before, is, you know, can finding those neighborhoods is a bit of a challenge, um, and yes, we can definitely help you out with that. We just didn't wanna get too far out in front of that till we knew what the intent was with the voluntary transfer process, so that we knew when are we talking about, how big are we talking about? So, we didn't wanna get too far down the, the path on that. So, without Adam sitting here, I just wanna make sure I don't overpromise. So, I would tell you that I'll need to check with him and see what kind of timeframe we need to, to do the work. But, uh, one of the things that I hear you saying is, so, check me on this, because I'm trying to make sure that I'm preparing for the next couple of meetings. So, what you would like to see is, what would the numbers look like in two thousand nineteen-twenty, uh, with the boundaries as they exist and are approved right now, with and without voluntary transfer? So, we can do a side-by-side, right? That's one thing we wanna see. If we go all-in on the restrictions for voluntary transfer, given some known schools that have too many kids and known schools that have too few kids, do we have some neighborhoods that we would recommend that you consider to move from one school to another with the goal of helping to, uh, obtain some better balance? that you consider to move from one school to another with the goal of helping to, uh, obtain some better balance? And then, if possible, can we disaggregate the numbers even further from the demographic data that we have? How close am I?
George, come here.
Okay. So, like I said, now I know what you want. I don't have Adam sitting here, so I don't want to overpromise. I'm going to sit down with him right away tomorrow. We actually, he and I are doing a presentation on student safety, so we are together tomorrow morning, first thing. So, um, I will check with him and make sure that I can, we can meet your expectations.
I feel like, yeah, I'm kind of like Scotty from Star Trek. He'll tell you those three weeks will get about an hour.
He usually tells me to beam up.
So, in July, you provided us, um, a chart of the nineteen boundaries that is broken down by race.
Yeah.
And E L L especially, and S E S.
That doesn't have the voluntary transfer kids pulled up.
Well, it would assume that, well, actually, it says live in.
Well, that's right, he did, uh, he did live in for those. Yes, he did, yeah. The one thing I don't know is how quickly he can do the other demographic data on that.
The other, the...
If you want to know sped, E L L, minority, yeah.
It's, it has that on it, white, black, Hispanic, Asian.
You do that for nineteen, twenty? Is that nineteen, twenty?
It's twenty nineteen boundaries.
All right, perfect, then he's already got it done.
It was July seventeenth.
Oh, yes, you're right, he did. Sorry, I was thinking he did that for current, but not for future. He did it for, for future also. Yes, all right.
So, you can cross it out.
All right, then that one's done. There you go, I can promise, Sean, that we can have that data for you. Because it's already on the board doc for tonight, we just have to pull it up from the July seventeenth agenda. Which is probably in my...
Everyone, uh, in agreement that we can move to the next, uh, the two mile radii map? I do have a couple of questions.
Well, I, I'm just wondering, on the building blocks, are you guys looking to us to identify them, or are you going to...
We'll bring some to you. Now, we can definitely bring some to you, because part of the problem is, and, and JP identified this the other day, there are some that are obvious that you can look at. Breckenridge, geographically isolated, you know who lives there. Much of the other data, you don't see. USDA, you can't see. Adam can see, so we might be able to say to you, hey, of the sixty neighborhoods that self-identified, here's one. Lemmy East, you know it, right? None of the rest of the folks, I think, could have done what Paul did, which was say, grab that neighborhood right there. Because that's a firsthand knowledge thing. So, we'll have some access to that that you won't, so I think we can definitely bring some to you.
And also including that attendance bussing, where there's already a bus, potentially, that could be. And, and just thinking about in terms of not increasing buses.
That's where I was going to go with the next. Because when you brought up the question about moving kids from Hoover East into Lemmy, the only ones that I could see would be ones that would currently be able to walk to Hoover East, but would have to be bussed.
And I think we have attendance, well, you, or attendance for, but, um, you know, and if there's another place where, you know, maybe it's not out of Hoover East, maybe it's out of Lucas or Stanford or something, you know, for example, Lucas is going to be really down in students. So, maybe it's not Lucas.
So, I do have a question on the map, so help me out with this. The black line that's around there signifies what?
All right. Adam sent me notes on this, I have to pull them up, I remember right there. I don't always get legends from Adam.
Now, well, I had asked initially, and I don't know if this is what this is with the black one, but I asked, what was the two mile radius that overlap part, so that there would be no bussing to either school? I don't know that that's what this is, though.
Hang on a second here.
And that's why I asked for this map, because I think you can see up in that, up in the very top right, where City High is, that the stuff down on the, to the right of that black line is supposed to go to Longfellow. But that's now going to be two miles or more away from Twain. And we're talking about pairing them, and that would mean that they would have a bus, which would make me, we would need to look at sending them somewhere else, possibly Lemmy, which has seats. Or Lucas.
I think.
Which could also still be within their one mile walking distance.
Yeah, Lucas actually would be helpful, because that might also help with the demographic place. And they're down a hundred students, so.
Or Lemmy's at Longfellow.
I think that is, because isn't that, isn't that Washington Place up there on the top?
Yeah, like college green powder.
So, that is, that is the combined Longfellow, Twain attendance area in nineteen, twenty. That's what the black line is. The black line is the combined Longfellow, Twain attendance area in nineteen, twenty. The Twain Elementary School, Longfellow kind of sitting in the middle. The light yellow is the one mile, and the yellow is the two mile. So, that's what that is.
One mile and two mile of what?
He says it's the, oh, so it's the, ooh, what did he use as the baseline for it? He says it's, it's the Twain, Longfellow paired zone, so that's the, the line, and it says one mile and two mile radii. I think, if I look at this, I'm thinking that that is, if you are... Okay, so here's Twain. Let me just look at the map and see. So, if you are within one mile of either school, so if you took the two one mile maps and laid them over the top of each other, so, for instance, if you're at the bottom, oh, you've got it up here, oh, good. So, if you're at the bottom down here, you're no more than, you're a mile driving distance from here.
And Longfellow, right?
No, I think from here, as I'm looking at those maps. You're, you're a mile from either one of those schools.
Either one.
Yes. Not a mile from this one, because I'm looking at the one mile map on Twain, and the one mile map on Twain goes right about here. So, I think what they are is they are laid over the top of each other, so you are one mile from one of the schools. Not both of the schools.
Just one.
One of the schools.
So, if we, so the law is you can't be on the bus more than that.
Correct.
So, if we bus, so if we bus to a central location, or you bus to your home, or, and then leave, that, does both those times count, or is there a reset?
Craig answered that last time, and I don't remember. I know he looked that up.
And, and I don't...
I believe there's, there's not a reset.
What I remember him saying is that there's not a reset.
Right, isn't that what he says?
But then you have to pick them up within a certain distance from their home. So, you can't ask them to walk a mile and then hitch a bus that takes them to Twain. If they're more than two miles from Twain, you must provide a bus. And I think, I want to say it was like three-fourths a mile from their home.
A bus stop.
Yeah, I think that time on the bus is a part of it.
And that's, should be...
Yes, that, I agree.
Which I think goes to why we had this one, too, if we decided that it would be paired to schools and we had one drop-off location, where then there would be transport to another place, if we could let the bussing in, then we would just have that one.
Can I open that up?
I still would be interested in seeing the area that's two mile, less than two miles from both schools.
Less than, less than two?
Less than two, so don't have to provide bussing to either school. So, if the household has a fourth grader and a first grader, they don't need bussing to either school.
So, that'd be the family that lives within walking distance of both schools.
Both schools.
Yep.
If considered two miles walking distance.
Yep. I think we can do that. I think you can do that, yep.
But then I think the question of the shuttle bus between the one school to the other school is a separate question. It wouldn't be mandated by law in that situation, but it might make sense, particularly if you're, you know, walking, you know, to the same old school.
The other two items on the agenda are those, um, that we put on both of them. The one difference is on the community and outreach one, if you click on the board, community meetings, um, Kim went through and added the, uh, whoops, the P T Os that had expressed interest. So, they're just parked down at the bottom. Um, we wanted to make sure that they were somewhere, so that if indeed you decided you wanted to address those, we would, uh, have those captured. The ones that we had were Twain, Longfellow, Shimmick, Hoover, Borlaug. If there are more, we can definitely add those, but those are the five that, when we went through the emails that we saw, um, interest.
And didn't Kim send out a doable poll?
She did, um, we were, uh, the question was, let's see what evenings people might have available. So, that request was made, so we sent that out, uh, for you to take a look at it, uh, for potential evenings you might have open.
Haven't taken a look at it, that's just what nights are available, so...
Yeah, and literally, that was the only request.
For our voluntary transfer meetings, or whatever other...
Yep, that, that was the request, was let's, let's at least have an idea of what nights some are all might have open.
I mean, we don't have the crystals up so tightly that we have no room for those others.
Exactly. Emailed, uh, James Paul and Steve, because I was listening to the last work session, and I kind of got the impression, and started talking about how to get all this P T O on schedule, and then it became, well, you know what, we're just going to have to do something bigger to you guys. And so, I thought that's the way we were going, so I mentioned that to a couple of folks that asked that they should be expecting something like that coming. So, I think we need to get out ahead, if we're going to talk about voluntary transfer in and of itself, and that needs to be communicated out, at least to the folks who are saying, what about my transfer? And then if we are going to have, then the additional kind of large group meetings, that's going to talk more about pairing and boundaries with both, that that's going to be later, to make that clear. Because they were, I know on the handful of folks from the P T Os that talked to me, they're like, you come to our meeting in October, it's this day, right? And they're soon, right? And I'm like, uh, I don't know that that's going to happen, right? So, I wanted to make sure, at least communicating out, no, we can't make that date, but here's the plans, you know? I might do two weeks after that, or whatever it is, and what the scope of those meetings were. Because I think a few of the specific asks came after people had heard our presentation in various places, and they wanted to not be the middleman. I think it's kind of how it played out, right? They didn't want to go back and try and say everything to their P T O that they heard one of us give at a presentation. They wanted us to do it, which I get, it would be a hard ask for someone who doesn't quite understand it. The few people that I've talked to have really expressed their concern to try and not put their spin on it, as they've tried to prevent or present the facts as they have heard it, right? But that's a big ask for, you know, for a P T O volunteer to take back one of our potentially lengthy, you know, presentations back to their P T O and say, this is all the stuff they told me, and I have no opinion on it, right? So, I get why they want us to do it personally, I just don't think it's going to be able to have a presentation that we've been presenting yet to every P T O group, just don't think that's sustainable, I guess.
In the time period that we have.
In the time period that we have. So, getting up some bigger ones, put together, to make sure it's clear and out there, all those folks will be... So, I guess, long story short, the doable poll, I think, whatever dates we find that people can or can't do, that's when we're going to have to target, what we're going to do on that date. It's not going to be necessarily go do it now, it might be, again, we'll eliminate the possibility that maybe, right, she's going to be the night where we talk about voluntary transfer at Southeastern, whatever type. I don't know, I think it sort of loosely fits into this agenda item, so I'll mention it. I've had, uh, several people ask specifically for any data that shows the benefit of doing this work, right?
Did parent schools?
Parent schools specifically, I think. And I would tell you, if you're probably assuming that it's people saying, don't pair my school, so prove me that it's going to work. But I've actually had it from both sides saying, you know, this, I'm really on board with this. Is there some data out there that we could show people how great it is, right? And we have had the other half too, where it's like, prove me that it's going to work, before you can do anything. Um, so, I, I don't know where we can find that. I know people latch on to, um, you've mentioned in a couple of meetings about Madison doing it, and a couple of other places, and they're like, well, these places have to have something to show for it.
No, here's, here's the thing.
Let me, let me, quick answer isn't a good, that you can run, uh, what you're going to say, but one thing that I've started to look at and say to people is, look at our own district, where we have schools and the numbers that we want them to be. Look at their vacancy rates versus our high F R L schools, uh, I mean, it grows. So, that's one school, granted, it's gated through six, but now you're just talking one school, it's still one balanced school, even if it does have all those grades. Plus all the other stuff we're doing, I would imagine that it would, I mean, our numbers show that.
No, I think that's a, that's a great point to bring up.
It's not the answer they want?
No, I think they're, they're wanting us to just slap up on our, our website, here's all the great examples of what's going to fix all of our problems, right? And we, we don't have anything, no, but there's got to be data out there.
Well, and, you know, with, with the Shimmick man pairing, we realize a savings every year going forward in that one. Now, that may not be as strong as getting into our discussion on student performance, but operational, you know, we, we had the whole bell schedule thing to save a hundred and eighty or two hundred thousand dollars.
Half a million.
Half, half a million, well, but that's one that Craig has brought to us, and, uh, we've, we've got that one that you could present, that, that pairing.
I think our own data is that those numbers and our own demographic data is one. I think, I don't think you're going to find a research study, right, that is going to say, this model does X, Y, and Z. I think like Madison's a good example, they had it ten years ago, they still have it. So, clearly, this is still working for them for demographic. I think, um, you know, I threw out some research to somebody, and that person's like, well, that's crap research. So, you're going to run into that with anything, where they say, show me the data, and there's all kinds of, um, back and forth. Here's one thing that's pretty clear and, and pretty consistent, a lot of educational research, the, the way you format your grade levels, so say you have five, six, seven, eight school compared to a junior high school, has almost zero impact on anything. It's really a matter of choice. So, there isn't like a right, if middle school better than junior high is, so there's really not a lot of data to say this does any harm. Um, when people bring up the idea that, well, more school transitions do show up in data as being detrimental, that's when an individual kid is moving many different places, not cohorts of kids moving, right? And so, that's pretty consistent in literature, there's really no data to say, middle school's better than junior high, or junior high's better than middle school. It's really a matter of choice and personal preference. Um, I, and then I'm a little, you know, do I want achievement to improve? Yes, but the problem is, then if the numbers don't go up, well, it's the achievement improvement. So, for me, I try to take the, what do you, do you want to live in, take, because I think that's really what this is more about. Like, do, what do you want your schools to look like? Do you want them to look more like? And it's, it is more philosophical. Um, and, and then you can, you know, then you can dig into the data, you know, Collinberg or some of these people or some of these people who show integrated schools have better achievement. But I think anytime you start to pull out those super specific things, you're going to run into, well, here's my thing that counters what you've had to say, and it's, it's just not as clean as, say, specific read, data on reading curriculum or saying things that are a little easier to tell scientifically. This kind of stuff isn't, there's not a lot of hard science up there. I mean, we're in education, it's pretty soft science anyway, oftentimes. So I, I think that's hard for us. I mean, maybe, I mean, you are, who I turned to is a, get that, so a little research study.
I think JP... Refer to that Hanover study.
I think JP, I think that, I kind of, when I answer people is multi, like you say, here's our proficiency, but here's the other part that you gain from this as well, and we're moving it in both pieces.
Because I run into that in some of my meetings where they're like, I don't believe you on any of this other stuff, you know? And it's like, okay. And that's why I asked Laura in Chase's book, say.
Well, you know, I was telling Ruthina earlier today that I've had a conversation with someone who is very anti what we're doing.
Okay.
And it's, it's one I willingly got into, the conversation, so it's, it's, I've gone on, put the, I was presented with information from him, here's a district that's doing something well, that used to try integrating, and now they're doing this, and they're succeeding. Have you looked at that research? Have you looked at that? And I've read what he sent me, and then I responded back, you know what, we're doing a lot of that right now. We're doing Avid, we're doing this, we're doing this, we're doing this, but we need this other piece too, because this just isn't getting it all done, so.
And a lot of, you know, in some of those places, I don't appreciate what you're talking about, you know, some of these things, we, community looks a lot different. You know, we're talking about couples, relatively small things in the grand scheme, things like Wild, Bussing, No, Jared, Mandarin, and we're not as big as some of these places. Geographically speaking, I mean, it's just not as, so if, for example, you don't like busing for equity, well, there's something to that near the neighborhoods you go through and how long you're on the bus and all that. And so I think sometimes you're comparing apples to oranges when you, when you try to bring up things, well, replicate what these people did. But we're, and this is what I like about our, the whole process that we've done is, all along the way, we're looking primarily at our own data to drive decisions and, and making it that way. And, and that's far more real than saying, oh, they tried this and maybe kind of assimilate the community and let's just sort of put that on what we're doing. So this feels more organic and, and original to our district, so I think it's hard then to go out and say, you know, prove to me this is going to work, or give me some way to show other people that, hey, this really is going to work.
Something else I think that I always go back to, it was one of the first things we did together as a group, it might have been during a retreat, where we broke into small groups of three, two or three. And I was in your group, but I remember a lot, what we came out of was that we want in the end for students to be better, prepared for life.
Yeah, life.
And so I keep going back to that as part of the reasons we're doing this.
So short answer, I don't think we have that, Tina, that we can say parent schools one hundred percent will have the desire effect for proficiencies, but I think, I think we're agreeing that it will better prepare our students for the real world and give them a healthy balance of more so of what our community really looks like instead of their island.
And I believe it to my core. I believe it to be true. And I believe that we are all working towards that solution. That is a hard sell for a group of angry people who don't want to do it and you say, trust me, I feel like this is the way to fix things. It's, it just is.
No, I hear you.
No. And I like the approach of saying, you know what, look at our data, this is the way it is. And I think I would, trying to talk myself into how we're going to work in this conversation, but not necessarily saying, pairing works because of dot, dot, dot. I think it's, you know, integration in our schools works, pairing is one of the ways we're trying to get there, right? And I, I think it's valid point that you said that, you know, junior high or middle school, whatever, there's no difference there, so it, just how we're setting the grades is not going to harm, you know, the process. And we get the benefit of the integration out, but I think that's what you are, pairing is specific, but then just the idea of integration, I think, isn't, is looking at our own data is maybe the right intent. There, there's probably at least, there's probably more data that tells you integrated schools is a benefit than there is pairing of schools is a benefit.
Right, right, I'm sure. Well, it's not that, it's not super, I mean, where it's common, it's not for demographic because it's usually for using schools and not, you know. I mean, Grinnell does it. I mean, all three of their elementary, it used to be that you had sort of the rich school in Grinnell with the professors, you had sort of the lower income Grinnell trailer side of town, and then you had sort of the middle.
That's where I'm at.
So they, now they do, everybody, Grinnell goes to each school, it's like K two, three, four, five, six, and it's, and Mitch Gross always tells that story about how, when it was the old way, even in high school, you weren't necessarily friends with those kids from that other elementary. And when they changed it, then you had, and that was, you know, different kind of integration we're talking about, but...
The college community, there's one campus or...
They did that. They had an easier time. I think they'll...
Yeah. Let's just start a little.
There was a person during the FMP that suggested, yeah, you have one monster school.
Oh, really?
Yes. And that way you would, you would have equity?
Where would that be under?
To get into like a field, field out.
Well, no, you have, you'd have one monster elementary, one monster high school, and then you'd win every state championship.
Have a band of opportunities.
Opportunities stacked.
Well, that'd be eight, seven, twelve.
All right, so we've gone off the rails. Yeah. I think we've covered everything on there.
I believe we have, unless you want to go through all of the historical links, so...
Those are only for your reference, but that's the only reason I put them on there.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second? In second in, all favor?
Aye.
Oppose?